The first several questions are actually for all to do with your vision of Orem in the future. What do you love about it? What do you want it to be in the future? Kind of what's your vision of where Orem is in the future?
I think Orem needs to be Family City USA. Let's look at version 2.0. That means that we are an attractive place for businesses. We don't want to take a backseat to Silicon Slopes or Provo. I think we need to retain our character as a family city and have better planning, where neighborhoods are strong in neighborhoods and businesses are strong in businesses. I see us as a city where we lead in many, many things. And we need to make sure that what's been happening the last couple of years, last year we were the second largest growing city in Utah, does not continue. We need to return back to our roots.
Yes, growth is going to happen if you like it or you don't like it. It's happening all across the country. It's happening all across Utah County. If you look around, everybody's facing the same problem. The key to this is managing the growth in a professional and proper way. Now, the State Street Master Plan is one that's been put together by professionals and those individuals that are in that business. It's not going to run anybody out of business. It's just a plan. It's just a vision to keep Orem moving forward. If you don't have a plan, all of you know will go backwards.
30 more seconds, by the way. That was just 30 seconds. Why does 30 seconds rarely stop? Apologies. Go ahead.
Well, it's just like the management of the growth of the University Mall and the University Parkway. I can remember when I rode my horse where the University Mall is. I mean, you can't keep things that way. The University Mall came and businesses like Trader Joe's and all those that want to come to this area are just clamoring because of the people, the ordinances, and the city that's so easily to work with.
We need to focus on renewal and revitalization rather than putting more buildings on less dirt. Cities all over America have faced the problem we face. We don't have any more land, and some cities have chosen to become much more dense than some have not. We have a choice in terms of how quickly we grow and whether the infrastructure we have can support what we're doing. Currently, I don't think our infrastructure is keeping up with our growth. So let's slow down our growth and be much more planful about what we're going to do.
Well, Orem is growing rapidly for sure. And it makes sense that when we create an affordable place where people want to live and study and play, that growth is going to happen. And so what we need to do is plan for that growth. We need to strategically study the issues and to engage with neighborhoods early so that we get their input on what they want to see happen in their neighborhoods. We need to have ideas like protecting single-family dwellings from high-density housing, conducting traffic studies, setting proper sidelines. And my husband and I, Wally, we moved to this city 27 years ago and raised our family here. And I want to preserve the city that we moved to. I want to strengthen the things that make our community wonderful: the neighborhoods, the schools, the parks, the library, the businesses that keep our local economy...
I don't believe that Orem is already built out. Like Murray said, it's as big as it's going to get because there's no more land here. And so our city is trying to cause it to build up into high-rises instead of just allowing the growth to take place in the cities surrounding Orem. And for some reason, they want to bring all these big businesses in and public transportation and make it a city crick in the south. We don't want Salt Lake. I think that's why a lot of people live in Orem, Utah. The BRT coming in, public transportation, is going to bring in crime, crime from Salt Lake. And does that make our neighborhoods safer? Does that make our children safe when there's all these drug addicts and people that get on that tram and come down, train and the buses and come down? And it'll make our city worse, all this stuff. Let's let Orem stay the way it is and let the growth go outside of Orem. It's not that big of a thing. Less traffic problems. Right. Thank you.
I think Orem is a great place to live, and I've lived here 33 years and raised my family here. With growth, you definitely have to manage growth. And I think the way we're doing it with the State Street Master Plan is it is a vision. So right now, it's on hold because we're looking at to see how businesses are going to be affected on State Street. And I'm very concerned about that. So I think we need to step back and talk to the business on State Street and see exactly what we're doing to them and if it's going to hurt them or help them. I love that we have a lot of parks. The past three years, we've had the All Together Playground. Amazing. It brings people from all over the community. Also, we have a new dog park, a new splash pad. We have Trader Joe's coming into the mall. The mall is very vibrant. It's keeping our sales tax up. If we don't have sales tax, which the mall and 13 South is 40% of our sales tax, how else would we get the revenue except raise property taxes? So I think in general, we need to make sure that we keep high-density housing out of our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I believe we need to handle not only Orem's growth. We need to be aware that growth around us is happening. So if Orem said we're not growing anymore and Provo, Pleasant Grove, and Linden didn't say the same thing, we still have an infrastructure problem. People pass through our roads. They drive here. They shop here thankfully and provide some of that sales tax which David talked about. We're grateful they come here. I want a community where my citizens, my children can come. Oftentimes, people tell me, hey, this city's growing too much. And I'll ask a typical Utah family, well, how many children do you have? And then the answer isn't one or two. And where do you want them to live? Well, we'd like them to live near us. So we need to rationally provide for growth, but also be aware that growth is going to happen around us. So we can't just put our head in the sand and say we're going to limit Orem's growth. We need to be prepared by infrastructure for those around us as well.
So related to that, several questions here on the subject matter of growth. We're dealing with lots of issues: roads, everything we've talked about. Where is growth the right level? What's your sense of when growth is too much? How would you go about trying to decide when do those quality of life issues get compromised by growth versus when do they get enhanced by growth opportunities? Brent?
Well, that's a difficult decision to put numbers on limiting population. I mean, the word got out a long, long time ago that Orem is a good place to live, do business, and raise your children. It was mentioned about the crime. And actually, with our growth, our crime rate is down. We just had a report a couple of weeks ago or a couple of months ago from our public safety people. So putting a number on growth, I don't think you can do that. What you have to do is manage that growth in a professional way and keep our parks, keep our rec center, and keep the things that people love and enjoy for their quality of life. It's just a matter of planning ahead. If you put, we're at 92,000 now, if you put 95,000 limit on it, how are you going to control that? It just can't be done. They're going to come. Look all over the county or state.
Well, I think that's a real interesting question. Where do we cap the growth of Orem? I don't know that I want to live in a city that says, "Orem's closed. Nobody else allowed." Unless you have a baby here. But maybe we need to start limiting family sizes too, so you can't have a baby here. You know, I just don't think that's the direction we want to go. I think there's enough space for all of us, and there's enough room. And that's part of what makes Orem Family City USA. We heard the mayor tell us just a few minutes ago that 70% of our growth is coming from new babies. Then when our teenagers grow up, where do they want to live and settle? They want to settle here. So a lot of our growth is because we're Family City USA. Where are we going to put our parents? We say, "You got to move out of Orem so we can have more kids?" No, we have our parents here. We have our children here. They have their children here. So we need to strategically plan for the growth. And that's what our city planners are doing. They're hooking 30, 40 years down the road.
I don't see how we can stop growth in Orem. If we leave it alone, it will grow naturally. But if we build high-rise apartments, we're going to bring in a lot of families that can't... How do you raise children in a high-rise apartment? How do you have a garden and have pets? And how do you do the things that you need to with a high-rise apartment with one or two bedrooms? And that's where we're trying to do it. They've planned 9,411 new apartments to build up in Orem to bring more population in the city. We don't, we don't need to do that. We don't need to plan for high-rise apartments and public transportation and five miles of train up and down State Street. That's in the master plan. And I'll bet you that most people on the council have not even read the master plan. I'll bet you that they've read parts of it. But you read that cover to cover. That is boring and that is a lot. It's like passing Obamacare with 1,000 pages. They voted on this, and I'll bet you they don't know what's really in it.
Well, Melly, I'm on the gamble, man, but I did read through it. Thank you. Yes, I did. So with Orem, we are an older demographic. And as the elderly get older and they pass away, that churn, new families will turn, will move to Orem. And I think that's how the natural growth of Orem is going to maintain. It's not building high-rise apartments. But there is a need for apartments to an extent that the apartments are cost-effective and low-income, that people can afford renting. My son was looking at an apartment, and it was $1,800, and he couldn't afford to go into school. So we need to make sure we have affordable apartments, but it has to be in an area that fits the apartment need there. Also, with that new growth and the churn, we will have new families and new kids. And I think our schools will be full too. I think that bodes well for Orem.
Ronald Reagan one time said, "A depression is when I'm unemployed, and a recession is when you're unemployed." Perhaps the same thing is true with how big Orem should be. If there's not room for my children to come, we have limited the growth. It's okay if there's not room for your children to come. I hope you know that's facetious, and I'm not chasing any of your children away. I think that's a difficult thing we face. Is we want our children close, but don't really care if the next guy's children are close. And it's nice to live in a city that's a desirable place to live. It's nice to live in a city that was voted one of the best places in America to live. It's nice to live in a city that has economic and educational opportunity for our children to work here and to be educated here. That proper balance will continue to happen over time, and it's not something we can say in 2017 what we'll be doing in 2027.
Growth and change are inevitable. Nothing ever, ever stays the same. So Orem will change, and we have to grow. The question is, do we grow rapidly or do we create renewal? What I see happening is Orem letting other people tell us how we should grow: the state with how many students are here, BRT developers, Alpine School District, telling us how we should grow. I think we need to take back control of our growth and let local neighborhoods determine whether high-density development should be put in those neighborhoods. We have the right and the authority to be able to determine how we grow and continue to make Orem a great place. The map unfortunately doesn't work. We cannot have all of our children live here. And so what remains here in Orem is up to us, and we can make it a wonderful, wonderful place as we upgrade, we revitalize, we renew our neighborhoods, and make this an attractive place, not just for people, but also for businesses.
Thank you. With the State Street Master Plan, will you be supportive of forcing businesses out? Ned, I think you get to go first now.
Absolutely not. I think nobody's intention is to force businesses out. That is not what Orem's about. Orem is welcoming to business. Orem thrives from the sales tax revenue. We need businesses on State Street. But let's be honest. Take a look at State Street. Is this the State Street that we want in the city of Orem? Look at our community in 1850. We've grown so much since 1850, haven't we? Look at us at 1900, our parents' generation, our generation. We've changed. We've grown. We've matured. State Street needs some changes, but the answer isn't to force businesses out. That's not what the State Street Master Plan is about. It's about beautifying Orem, strengthening Orem. I support that.
So the question is, the State Street Master Plan might force businesses out, right?
I need two more questions.
Am I in favor of forcing businesses out? Of course not. But with a three-lane bus transportation system down the middle of State Street, which is over five miles, it's in the State Street Master Plan. And it will cause that there will be no parking in front of businesses along State Street. The sidewalks will be moved back several feet on both sides to make the road wider and put a three-lane buses down the middle. And so businesses will likely be forced out because of that, because they need the parking. And also, let's see, I lost my train of thought. The State Street Master Plan has made it so that businesses along State Street cannot expand without approval. And a lot of the businesses will have to leave because they cannot expand. It won't be allowed. Their businesses will not be allowed to add on or expand in those ways.
So I'm definitely not in favor of closing down or kicking out any businesses on State Street. The State Street Master Plan, in my mind, when I voted on it, was it's a vision. It's a roadmap of where we want to go and what the city, the State Street, will look like. Now, can things change as we go? Yes, but it is, it is just a vision. Now, I talked to a lot of businesses on State Street. Holly, that owns Mending Ched, and she's very concerned about the State Street Master Plan. So I talked with her, and we're having a dialogue so we can understand exactly her needs. So the key thing is we need to listen. And that's why I've been knocking doors from day one to talk to the citizens and also the businesses to see exactly what their needs are and what we can do to help them.
It probably doesn't take a minute to say no. I'm not in favor of forcing any businesses off of State Street. I'm grateful we have a plan, and it's just that. How many of you have had a plan for life that got interrupted along the way? I'm grateful for a plan. We'll make changes to it as we go. But no, we're not going to close businesses in the meantime.
Small businesses are the heart and soul of any community. So obviously, we're not going to close down small businesses. In fact, we want the opposite. We want to attract small businesses and ensure that this is, Orem is a place where they are welcome and can do what they would love to do. We do face an interesting dilemma with regard to State Street. Someone told me the other day, well, let's be like Springville and let's focus on our downtown and upgrade State Street. Well, the challenge is they've upgraded a half-mile and we have five miles. And so I actually think the fact that Orem doesn't have a downtown is a strength, not a weakness. We have communities. We ought to be proud that we don't have a downtown. We ought to be proud that we have family neighborhoods. And that's where we need to focus in our family neighborhoods and ensure that the State Street Master Plan does not degrade those family neighborhoods. Those living around State Street, as well as the business owners, are really nervous about what's going to happen with the master plan. And I think we need to look at that and revisit what's going to happen there.
Yes, I think businesses are a little bit nervous about the master plan. I'll have to agree. But I can remember several years ago, I had property on State Street. UDOT came by and wanted a couple of feet to put in a middle lane. That concerned me with my business and potentially what could happen. And you know what? They did it. And look at the traffic flow now. It's better and smoother. But the business had to sacrifice a little bit. And I'm still in business and doing the same thing over there. The business can stay forever. They can hand it down to their kids, next generation. No one's forcing them out. That's been one of the fears, that once they change hands or pass it to their son or daughter, they can't exist anymore. But that's not the case. They can stay until they close. There's just misconception there and misunderstanding.
Thank you. What's your position on incentives to entice businesses to come to Orem for economic development? Melly, I believe you're first.
To entice, my stance on economic development, how in...
An incentive for businesses to come for economic development.
Okay. I don't believe in economic development the way that the city council believes in. I believe in economic development, how it has to do with free enterprise economic development. I think that businesses should be able to come and compete and give the best price and sell the best product and not have government come in and say things like, you know, we're going to give this, your competitor, some money so that they can come up to where you are. One example is Brent Brown Toyota was given $650,000 a few weeks ago by the council. And they are, they are already one of the biggest car sellers in the valley. They sell $400 to $430 cars a month. And they were given a subsidy. The mall gate were given a subsidy. And the mayor said that it wasn't really a subsidy. It was some kind of a government plan. And what it amounts to as subsidies are all these TIFs and CDAs and stuff like that.
So economic development, if you look at the mall and that CDA that we offered them, it's a post-sales tax. So they have to put in the $500 million bucks, and the property tax has to go up for them to get any kind of reward. So that is $500 million invested into Orem, and that's generated all these new businesses. I mean, look at Trader Joe's. They didn't go to Provo. They came to Orem because of the mall. Also, to Conos, they left Provo to come to the mall. So I think the mall is our central focus in Orem. And also, one thing we need to realize, we have four entrances and exits into Orem, right? That's huge. So how much traffic is going to come through Orem to go to the mall and shop in the stores in Orem and go down to State Street? To me, economic development need to be friendly to businesses and make sure that they want to come. And I think Orem's a great place for businesses. And you can see, we had 182 new businesses over the past three years. So I'm thankful for what we've done and that people want to come to Orem.
I too am grateful for companies that want to invest in Orem. And I'm a businessman that does a cost-benefit analysis. In the mall situation, they paid for infrastructure that Orem City would have had to pay to replace sewer, water, and power lines to put them in. And we allowed them to get paid back if they were successful. Brent Brown is the most successful. He had to be speaking at UVU last week, and I chaired that meeting. They sold 300 cars last month. It's their highest car ever. I think that's not a big deal, whether it was 400 or 500 or 300. But I think it's the very fact that sometimes we get pretty casual with our facts in these discussions. And I think that has no place in public office. So I am in supporting of growth. I'm in support of cost-benefit analysis. It makes sense for the city. And by the way, I was out of town and did not vote for Brent Brown.
I had a conversation with a friend last night who works for Ancestry and said, "I'm moving up to Silicon Slopes next week." And I work for Exactware, and they moved, and Adobe's moved. And he said to me, "How are you going to replace these three tenants?" You know, while we focus on the mall and all the jobs that creates, it does not provide the type of living for people who have large families. We need to focus on our attractiveness as a business so that Provo and Silicon Slopes don't edge us out. We need to find a way to attract the types of businesses where we can live where we work, where we have less stress, we have less of a commute. We reduce congestion if we live where we work. Orem needs to do some serious work around understanding why we're not doing what we can and potentially looking at some partnerships, partnerships with universities, partnerships with Silicon Slopes that will increase our attractiveness around our core businesses, the businesses that support our families and our family neighborhoods.
This is a competitive business. I mean, it's not something that you can go out and just say, hey, come to Orem. You have to convince them. And that's one reason why Orem City hired Ryan Clark as an economic director that can go after these people and bring them into the city. Now, there's lots of factors that affect that. The cities look at the quality of life. Orem is top-notch on quality of life. They look at their workforce. We have an excellent workforce. 2014, Governor Herbert sent out a notice to the cities to check with your businesses, have a survey, and see if you can improve regulations. We did that, and 25, 1.8% that did the same survey said they did not have any complaints with the city. The only concern was maybe the signs.
So the question being, am I in favor of tax breaks for businesses to bring business into Orem? I think that's a multi-layered question. Sales tax is one of the greatest revenue for the city to run and for us to make improvements. Sales tax helps keep property taxes low. So do I want good, strong businesses in Orem? Yes, I do. And so if we're specifically talking about the mall that had two anchor stores absent, 14 stores absent, a handful of kiosks absent, and so they're given a post-performance tax incentive? Yes, I think that was good for Orem. I think that helps strengthen Orem. And that's the correct use of a so-called tax incentive.
What percentage of the city is serviced by Utopia, and how close is it to being self-sustaining?
I just love Utopia. No. So 38% I think of the city can get Utopia. That's why I ran four years ago. My whole point is I think government should never be running a private enterprise, which private enterprise should be running Utopia. You know, we're $3 million in the hole, and we do have a committee looking for ways to solve the issue. But I'm not for any bond for Utopia or a utility fee to fund Utopia. I love fiber. It's a great product. But I think if the citizens want it, they should have to pay for it if they want it in their home.
The answer to your question, and I'm sure David's accurate, but it's too darn small a number, that are being able to be serviced by Utopia and not enough for taking it when it goes by. So the question is, what should we do? We should, we could, in a perfect world, roll back our clock to 2002 and vote against it. But that option is not in front of us. And since I'm a realist, then we solve problems that become in front of us. And I don't do this alone. I do this in harmony with the mayor and other members of the city council. In the last four years, we're no longer paying for a, what's the term I'm looking for? You can't help me. Operating expenses. We're just paying for our debt. That was voted on 2002, 15 years ago, before any member of the city council was on it. We are building out more, and it is carrying its own. Is it fixed? No. But this was a troubled child that's a whole lot better than she was or he was, to be equal, than they were four years ago, and I'm grateful for the improvement of this child.
You know the statistics. I live in an area that's serviced by Utopia, and I tried three times to get Utopia to a company I sent. I went online twice, and I called, and no one would come and service me. It was very disappointing. Utopia is a problem, and the problem isn't just the infrastructure that's built. It's the organizations that are supporting it. I have a dear friend I was speaking with here in Orem, and he said, "I moved to Orem three months before Provo announced Google Fiber." And he said, "I was so mad. I would never have moved to Orem if I had known about Google Fiber." And then he said, "I've become aware of technology that I think is going to happen in the next five to 10 years that will make Utopia obsolete. I think we will get broadband that will be as fast as fiber." So he said, "I would love to..." He said, "While it makes sense to expand Utopia, I think technologically, it doesn't make sense to commit for 40 years when things will change faster than that."
It's never changing world, especially with fiber and internet and what can be done with that. Back when this was approved, fiber was about the only thing you could get. I mean, it was just, all these options didn't exist. I'm not saying that it was a mistake at that time, that I don't think they had the knowledge and the education on costs and whatnot. You know, maybe it was a mistake, maybe, maybe it's not. But like Tom said, we got to look to the future and what we have to work with. It's a situation that we need to go into the areas right now that have fiber and pick the low-hanging fruit and see if we can get those individuals to sign up. And that's one of the things that the management team is doing at this time. Currently, 35%, 38% has it available. But we need to expand that with the present population that can't get it.
Hindsight is always 2020, isn't it? I mean, in 2002, I know that Mayor Washburn and the city council made the best decision that they could make for our city. And I'm forward-thinking. I'm not going to look at the past and try to rewrite history. We signed an 11-city agreement, a 30-year plan, and we're 12 years into it. We have 18 years left to go. You've heard the statistics? We're 38% built out. We need a 30% take rate to break even. And right now, we're the, out of the 11 cities, we're number one. Wherever Utopia exists, the citizens love it, except for maybe Murray.
I try.
We've got experts in the city that are working on this. We've got the Public Works Advisory Commission, we've got Sam Lenz on the current city council, we've got Jamie Davidson, the city manager. I think we need to look forward and find solutions and not look back to what we can't change.
Utopia has been a miserable failure. If the council back in 2004 would have known the proper role of government, they would not have voted for that. And so, but as it is, Provo sold their interest in iProvo, which is their failed internet service for $1, and they were happy. And they took on the debt and they're paying it off. And I believe that's what we should do. Our city council spent $45,000 on attorneys to keep citizens from voting on BRT. And they should have taken that money to hire attorneys to get us out of Utopia. Our last three city managers, including the current one, have all been pro-Utopia. So there's never been a good faith effort made by city attorneys to get us out of the Utopia mistake. So I am against throwing good money after bad. We need to get out, we need to take care of it, pay off the debt. And with attorneys, maybe we can lower the debt so that it's not as bad to pay it off. Because private enterprise can do a far better job in public utilities and well, in public, whatever you told, the internet than the government can. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We're now going to give each 90 seconds to do just kind of any following statements. And Tom, since you didn't get to go first, we're going to just go first. And just go back this way so I don't have to run behind you anymore, if that's okay. So 90 seconds, please. You don't give me a 30 as well?
I want a 30.
Or whatever you're going to give me. Give me a 45, I'll know it's halfway. It'll be 45 for all.
Thank you.
Halfway.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the Chamber of Commerce and to Orem City for providing these debates. We've had now two that are video-recorded so people can watch them. We have our positions on many situations that were recorded early in the campaign. So if we're not able to get together again, citizens can watch these and see where we stand on many, many issues. I'm grateful that we have technology that allows that to be possible. So I thank you for that. I'm also thankful for the vast majority of citizens of Orem. They're good people. I got to tell you, I do not like campaigning. I love serving the city, but this campaigning is a lot of fun. Oftentimes, there's contention here. And I've been taught where contention comes from and I try to avoid that where possible. And regrettably, in a public eye, often we cannot. Previously, a former apostle of the LDS Church was quoted. And I, I am LDS and I attempt to be a practicing LDS man. But I also am more interested in living apostles. Who said, and I'm quoting Dallin Oakes, who said, "When our positions do not prevail, we should accept unfavorable results graciously and practice civility with our adversities." Regrettably, I don't always see that practiced by a minority of citizens of Orem. I'm grateful for the vast majority who will disagree with me without saying, I'm right and you're wrong, or I'm right and you're evil. But will rather say, we disagree. And we can come to be disagreeing without being disagreeable. I find that's true of most of the people I serve with and I thank them for that.
Thanks, Tom. Five years ago, I was on the Orem Youth Baseball Committee and started going to city council meetings. And the concerns back then were Midtown Village, Utopia and the ball fields that are going to be taken out for parking. But since we've been on, I've been on the council, we've made a lot of progress in Midtown Villages moving forward. But I think that the key thing is, and also, we're looking for a solution on Utopia. But you know, the debt is down 27%, which is $22 million, which is huge, over three and a half years. Why? Because we pay our bills and we're not bonding and going into debt. We have a great business climate. The Moore-Tormon Apartments, that was put in back in 2014, which stopped apartments on 13 South State Street, Center Street and 8 North, which has worked. And we have a new dog park. The mall is booming with Trader Joe's. Favorite project is the altogether playground. I think with my leadership and track record, I think, and the current city council, I think we can move Orem in the right direction as I feel we're doing. And I appreciate this opportunity, thanks.
Tom, I know there must needs be opposition in all things and I guess Hans and I are the opposition.
Civilize.
We have been civil. I was raised on a large cattle ranch in Idaho. And we ran 1,000 head of range cattle and we grew hay and grain. And we had good years and we had bad years. We had years that our crops failed, years that our cattle didn't, we lost a lot of calves. There was just, you know, struggles. And we didn't even think once of going to government for a handout to say, look, we're having a hard time, we need some money. We had neighbors that did it, but we didn't do that. It was, it was, we had that self-sufficiency, that ability to do it ourselves. God gave us what we needed to do it. So what we'd do on hard years, we would fast and pray and we would ask Heavenly Father for blessings. And what do we do in Orem? When we have hard years, we raise taxes and we talk about helping businesses and all this stuff. Let's let the free pioneer spirit reign in Orem where people have that drive to do better and to compete and not have government come in and manipulate the market and cause that to change. We need to rely on God and have faith in God that when our economy's down, that he'll take care of us. Thank you.
I love living in Orem. Orem is great. And when you leave the debates today, I want you to remember four things about me. The first thing is, I have been involved in continuous service in Orem all 26 years that I've lived here. I've served on numerous city committees and have volunteered in our schools while raising five children and working as a critical care hospital pharmacist. I am passionate about Orem and I have a service, a record of continuous service. Second, I want you to remember that as a healthcare professional and scientist, I am logical, forward-thinking and outcomes-based. I am trained to look at presenting issues with positive outcomes in mind and I will do the same for Orem. Third, as a critical care hospital pharmacist, I have great attention to detail and the ability to study and learn. And actually, I love researching and digging into details and performing due diligence so that sound resolutions can be realized. And lastly, 51% of the population in Orem is female. I bring that important and relative perspective to the table. Please learn more about me at my newly-launched website, annetfororem.com. My name is Annette Hartness and I ask for your vote.
It's been a privilege to serve with Orem City Council this past four years and Mayor Brunson, the other council members. We don't always see eye to eye. But one thing about this council is it's a team. It's a team effort. If you don't agree with them, you find out why you don't agree with them. You don't get angry and leave. I know the majority of businesses and residents are heavily invested in Orem. And I want to continue their success. As we move into the future with growth, I have the same concerns as many of you sitting here or watching it on Facebook. Stopping growth is not the answer, but good management is. I have vested interest in Orem as all of you. And I know Orem is a great place to live. I've done business in Orem. Just last week, Orem was named the number 14 by Money Magazine of the best place to live in America. My wife have been residents, my wife and I have been residents our entire life. Again, I don't do nothing to harm our residents with a vote or business. We need you to give us input. That's where we get our information. The people of Orem is what makes it great. With my experience and time, I would like to continue to serve. I know what is needed in this community. I look at the glass not half-empty or half-full, but refillable. Thank you.
First, I'd like to challenge my colleagues here to a public debate in the evening when the public can attend. Please come. Orem is fully grown, it's a mature city. And yet, we see haphazard high-density developments all over the city. As I talk to residents of Orem, this is not what they want. They do not feel good about what's happening in the city. We need to give residents a voice. Let local committees have a say in whether high-density developments occur. We did an online poll and 75% of Orem residents said they feel like they didn't have a voice here. What we need to do is focus on renewal and revitalization instead of putting more buildings on less dirt. We need to find ways to renew and revitalize our older neighborhoods, make them more attractive and upgrade those neighborhoods. We need to upgrade our reputation as a business, attractive place to do business and business environment. As we look forward, we need to make sure that we plan what's best for families. We are a wonderful place, we are Family City USA, but that is a lag measurement. People are worried that that is going away. We have a choice today about how we look at that and what we do in the future. The decisions we make today will determine how we grow and whether that will be the same 10, 20, 30 years down the road. We need to take control of these local decisions. And as we look down the road, let's not plan for growth. Let's instead focus on renewal of this great city. Thank you.
Yeah, please join me in thanking these individuals for their performance.